I'd call the meeting to order and welcome everybody to the Planning Commission meeting. And is there any changes to our agenda?
No, sir, there are no agenda changes.
It's Commissioners, would Kelly's having a little bit of trouble hearing who makes the motion and a second, so wouldn't make a motion or a second if you just kind of raise your hand or be sure to turn your mic on. And so is there a motion to adopt the agenda? He raised his hand. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, got a motion, second, to adopt the agenda, all in favor? Any opposed? Need approval of the minutes from February the 9th, 2012 meeting, or any corrections or additions?
Move approval of the minutes.
Second? We've got to stop this.
Just don't be so animated here. Got a motion, second, all in favor, aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are now official. Council members in the audience. Buddy?
Councilman Buddy Baker, I'm here on number four on that agenda.
You want to speak now or do you rather wait? I've got a minute if you'll unroll it now.
Yes, this, I'm Councilman Buddy Baker, District 20. This property on Osceola Avenue, I haven't had any calls either for or against this property being rezoned. Mr. Carl Dreyfus is here today. He's talked to a lot of the neighbors out there, and I think y'all have letters of that effect, and he also has maps, the ones that he talked to. And I can't understand why this property wasn't rezoned back when the other properties were rezoned commercial from Charlotte down to Sprint, the alleyway right there at Sprint. It should have been rezoned commercial all the way through to Burgess, I thought, but nevertheless, it wasn't, so I'm here to speak in favor of getting this rezoned.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other councilmen? And any items to be deferred or withdrawn?
No items on the deferral or withdrawal agenda.
Any items on consent?
Yes, sir, we have a few. Just for information for our audience, if you're not satisfied with the decision made by the Planning Commission today, you can appeal the decision by petitioning for writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of the entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. It will move to the consent agenda. Please note that items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or a member of the commission requests the item to be removed from the consent agenda. So these are the items on your proposed consent agenda today. Beginning on page three with item number one, this is the Major and Collector Street Plan Amendment. It's a request to amend your adopted Major and Collector Street Plan designations as outlined in staff report for various areas in Davidson County, and staff recommendation is to approve. On page five, excuse me, page four, item number three, this is Rolling Mill Hill, the district building. This is a periodic review of an approved specific plan district known as Rolling Mill Hill District Building. It's for a portion of property located within the Rutledge Hill Redevelopment District and approved for construction of this building with no maximum height at the property line. Staff recommends approval that you, excuse me, staff recommends that the commission find that the SP district is inactive and direct staff to prepare a report to the council to continue the implementation of the development plan as adopted, and that no rezoning is recommended on this property. On page five, item number five, this is a request to rezone from the R6 district to the RM 20A district for properties located at 1628 and 1630 Sixth Avenue North. Staff recommends approval. Item number six, Brentwood Branch Estates. It's a request to permit the extension of an approved concept plan for one year for the Brentwood Branch Estates subdivision for eight single-family clustered lots at 501 Broadwell Drive, and staff recommends approval of the extension of the concept plan to March 27, 2013. And item number seven, this is under Other Business, it's a request for an open space dedication agreement between Summerfield Development LLC and Metropolitan Government for a portion of property on Ashford Trace to allow a portion of the Kane Ridge Elementary School property to be counted towards future open space requirements of the Treehaven subdivision Phase 5 when the final plat is approved and recorded, and that's the end of the consent agenda.
Staff has asked that items one, three, five, six, and seven be considered on consent. There's a motion to do that.
Move.
Second.
Motion's second, all in favor? Any opposed? Those items are now officially approved on consent. Members of the audience, items two, which is a nonconforming billboard, and item four, which is four parcels rezoning on Osceola, the only items that'll be on the public hearing for today. So we'll now take item number two. Let me ask a question. There's Councilman Claiborne, there's some emails that come in, I think, from federal attorney and from you concerning some of the bills before the state legislature. If those are passed, would that negate what we're doing here today?
I think, I think so. The one that has to do with signage specifically transfers all of the rights under state law to all on-premise signs. Now, that's, you know, the, Rick, can you?
Actually, the billboards already have those, those protections already applied to billboards, and they would be extended to all signs, so it doesn't really change this text amendment in terms of what's nonconforming and what's not nonconforming.
Because when if we were premature, what, you keep up the legislation, when do they plan to adjourn?
They plan to adjourn April 29th, that's what the comptroller told me. I don't know how he knows that. We're hoping it's April, but I don't think we can, I think we should probably go on since it's here. That's speculative as to whether those will pass, and I do think it could have an impact, but we should probably go ahead.
Okay. One question. Okay, go ahead, Brenda.
This is item two on your agenda, and it's a text amendment to require that the Board of Zoning Appeals determine if a conversion of a legally nonconforming static billboard to a triface billboard would result in a greater negative impact on the adjacent properties. Originally, this was a text amendment that would have prohibited the conversion of any nonconforming static billboard to a triface billboard. That text amendment was discussed at your November meeting and again in a work session in January, but it was not the intent of the sponsor of the bill to prohibit the conversion, but to add a public process to the conversion, and so that text amendment was withdrawn and replaced with this one. Currently, the code makes no distinction between a triface billboard and a static billboard, but there are additional regulations in place for digital billboards. At one time, the triface billboards were included with those digital billboards, but they were removed from those regulations in January of 2011. Triface billboard is defined as a non-internally illuminated billboard consisting of a sign face comprised of a series of vertical triangular louvers that can be rotated to show up to three separate sign messages, and there's an example of a triface billboard there. Billboards are considered use, and the zoning code defines a nonconforming use in the following way. Nonconforming use means a use originally legally established but which now does not currently conform to the applicable use regulations of the zoning district in which it is located. There are many reasons why a billboard was legally installed, but changes in the zoning code have made them nonconforming. The distance between billboards was increased. Billboards are now required to be on a single pole. They need to be located on streets that are at least four lanes and widths, and bulk standards were amended. Alternatively, a change in circumstance might make the billboard nonconforming. For example, if it was, the setback for a billboard is 20 feet from the right-of-way, and if the right-of-way was widened, then the billboard would no longer meet that setback requirement. Here's two examples of billboards, a nonconforming one and a conforming one. You'll see the one on the left is on four poles, and it's on a three-lane road, and the other one is on a single pole, and it's actually oriented toward the highway. Currently, any nonconforming static billboard in the county could be replaced with a triface billboard. With this text amendment, certain requests for conversions would require determination by the BZA that the conversion of the billboard would not result in a negative impact on the adjacent property owners. This text amendment would impact a number of nonconforming static billboards, but not all. There are some that would not be impacted because it, and it would depend on the type of conformity, nonconformity of the billboard. As we just discussed, state law gives added protection to billboards that are nonconforming, and if it's nonconforming only because they do not meet the bulk standards, then for purposes of this text amendment, they're actually considered conforming. Any new billboard would have to meet the bulk standards, but an existing billboard that doesn't meet bulk standards is considered conforming under state law, and they would only need to go and get a permit to convert to a triface billboard. So if a billboard is nonconforming because it doesn't meet separation requirements, it's located on a road less than four lanes wide, and is on multiple poles, then it would need to go to the BZA, and there's one exception to that. If the billboard happens to be multi-poled and is on a state highway, and it's governed by a different set of regulations, and it means that those regulations say that billboard, a like billboard needs to be replaced by a like one. So a four-pole billboard would have to be replaced by a four-pole billboard, so those particular billboards are not considered nonconforming. So if the reason that they are considered, the nonconforming is because they're on a multi-pole, but they're not on a four-lane street, they're on at least a four-lane street, and they meet the distance requirements, then for these particular billboards, they would only need to get a permit, they wouldn't need to go to the BZA. It's very confusing. Here's a picture of a triface billboard, and staff is recommending approval of this text amendment.
Okay. Item is open for public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in support? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Please come and state your name, you'd be allowed two minutes.
Good afternoon. My name's Bill Rush. I'm real estate manager for Lamar Advertising here in Nashville. We've been in business here for about 50 years. We've been deploying trivisions for 20, 25 of those years with no problems. Had the blessings of codes, and all of a sudden this come up. We're opposing the adoption of this bill as it's written, as to us, it's a clear violation of 137208 Tennessee Code Annotated. It's the nonconforming use statute. It allows us to expand our business, demolish them, and reconstruct them. By deploying these trivisions, all we're doing is expanding our business to give us the capability of having three messages on a structure. Changes face, it's just, that's all it is. It's changing the face panels, no change in the structure, no change in the use, it's still a billboard. There's been several cases statewide, and I'm also the executive director of the Outdoor Advertising Association of Tennessee, so I'm familiar with cases from one end of the state to the other that back up our position, and the Court of Appeals, in a case up in Johnson City, specifically ruled we could add additional facings to structures. We do not understand the rationale for this legislation. It's unclear to us, it's confusing at best, and asking the BZA to determine that the conversion will not result in a greater negative impact on adjacent properties is subjective at best. We just don't understand where this is coming from, and we appreciate you disapproving this as written, and I'll be happy to answer any questions at any time if it's appropriate if you have. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Is there a motion to close the public hearing? So a motion, second, close the public hearing, all in favor, aye? Any opposed? One question, one of the emails, I think made reference, and I don't know whether this came from staff or from someone outside, but made reference to a state statute that had been tried in Johnson City, and this is, is this?
This, this case, right. It was referred to, brought to this.
But is this not parallel to that? What would be the difference? If we're approving this?
Well, without having that case right here in front of me and being able to recite it, it'd be a little difficult for me to tell you right now, but I will say this. I don't think that this ordinance is written violates the grandfathering protections that are afforded in 137208. The protections that they're speaking of is that we can't change the zoning regulations for where a billboard can be, and if the billboard already exists, then make them take that billboard down. And then there are also additional protections for billboards, as far as how they can expand. The state statute goes into detail about what kind of billboards can go up, how large they can expand to, depending on what size they are at the beginning of their nonconformity. And so the state already has those types of regulations, but the state statutes are silent as to trifold billboards. It doesn't say that they can convert from a single-face or a two-face standard billboard to a trifold. It just doesn't make that distinction. And so my understanding of what this ordinance would do is that it would require that if an applicant wants to change their billboard face from a single-panel billboard to a trifold, that they'd simply have to come before the BZA and show that it doesn't have some, and I've forgotten the exact language, but let's see here.
Okay. That it won't result in a greater negative impact to adjacent property.
Now, what that might be is a different story. I mean, I can, I can come up very quickly with a way where that might be a problem. If you had a series of three billboards in a row along Lebanon Road, Murph's Road, wherever, and you allowed all, and all three of them by right were able to change to trifold billboards, and they're all switching at different times, that could be a distraction for motorists. I don't think many people would disagree with that. So a lot of times when we have our distance restrictions about how close billboards can be to each other, and certainly the state has those sort of restrictions when it comes to digital billboards, the same concerns, I think, would arise if you have billboards that are completely unregulated as to how close these type of trifold billboards that change faces periodically can be. So I think there's a justification for why we would want to enforce it the way that this is written, but I also will tell you that there are no case laws. There is no case law that's directly on point with this issue. The courts haven't addressed the regulation of trifold billboards in the manner that we're seeking to do it.
Greg?
In trying to, I've been familiar with some of this, and it gets complicated quickly, and I appreciate you recognizing that. In trying to wrap my head around it, you know, I think it's really a question of when you change the face, does that change the use? And does that use, does that change in use have an impact on the community? Number one, I don't think that it changes the use. There might be a few instances where it could have an impact on the community, but I think, you know, it seems like without a change of use, and you're adding messages to it, that silently twist, what kind of impact does that have on the community? I don't know if silently twisting, other than distracting the driver, if they're in maybe many little cases, limited cases, I just don't see the need for it. So I'm going to vote against it because I think that the impact is, is not there, and I think that it doesn't change the use, and that's where I'm at.
Derek? Stuart?
Well, I'm, as a matter of process, we do have a letter that sort of summarized before we got here the comments of the person from Lamar, which very specifically mentioned that case. And so I would like to think that we would have a response to what that case had, but it might not have gotten to you, because I do think it's something we don't deal with a lot. I know our convention, our general thought about what a, what a nonconforming use is, if it's, if it's the same shape, if it doesn't expand, you know, it doesn't feel like, there's a part of me that doesn't see the rationale for this, but I'm, I'm a little bit of a loss because I was planning to hear an explanation of why that case either did or didn't control. I know we're not all lawyers, but it seems relevant. I'm going to think about this for a while.
Judy?
Bill, tell me.
Bill?
If an applicant takes their request to the BZA, are they having to pay for that process?
There is a fee associated with it. I don't know the exact number of the fee, but I believe it's around $250, $260. I think that was what Joey told me it was.
Okay. And you have any idea, Brenda, how long it would take to do all this extra processing through the BZA?
I don't think it's that long. You make your application to the BZA, you get on the BZA schedule, there is notices that would have to be done, and signs posted as well as part of that, and I don't know, I'm sorry, I don't know the schedule for the BZA.
Okay, well, anyway, I just, I have a little problem with maybe slowing down and the fact it's going to cost them something to do, and I imagine most of the cases would be approved, anyway. Greg brought up something. I really was trying to figure out when you're talking about use, because the signs, basically the use is advertising, most of the time it's something to sell, but are you talking about the fact that it may be trying to convert you in your thinking? Is that the, when you're saying use, is that what you're talking about?
Well, Commissioner, I think what I'm referring to is that it doesn't change use in terms of, it's still advertising. It, I think, impact is what I'm talking about. The use stays the same just by twisting of words, and it doesn't, I think that you vest in rights with a billboard, and you have those rights until you change the use of it, and that's what I was referring to. And I don't think that there's an impact or change of use, which means, that's, that's what I was referring to when I said use.
In my mind, I was trying to picture this, and if there's a picture of an automobile up there, you know what they're trying to do. They're trying to sell your car. But if there's some message up there that says, "You come join our church," isn't that a change in use?
Well, advertising is advertising, a billboard is a billboard, unless it's like, say for instance, I think that in the code it defines a change of use. Now, I may be wrong in speaking, I may have to ask Doug this, but when you change from a single-panel billboard to a, say, digital billboard, I think that's almost defined as a change in use, and there's different regulations that regulate that. And that's what I'm saying. I'm saying that a single-panel billboard has the same use with no other impact, so why are we making an additional regulation on that particular company that owns it when there's no change in use, there's no impact change? That's my argument.
When you say change use, but that, that's disrespectful to the fact that you've got three messages instead of one. That doesn't matter.
I would say, I would argue that that's correct. I mean, the impact is changing from one sign and twisting of poles, and it's, advertising is still advertising, even though you're increasing the amount of messages that are there.
Well, I think you helped me some, but it's still some fog out there.
Stuart, let me come back to, let me go ahead with the council.
I don't think I can add anything else to what's already been said. I do have a concern to know about this appeals court case, whether it's relevant to what we're talking about here or whether it's not. And so I would like to move that we defer this one meeting and give our legal counsel time to research that and report back to us, so we, we know exactly what we're dealing with.
Second. A motion, second. Stuart, you want to say something?
I'd like to support the motion to defer, but I'd also like to, to get a staff analysis a little bit more on the phrase that, that's in here. Must first determine that the conversion will not result in a greater negative impact on the adjacent properties. I do think that's pretty broad and vague, and that may be all over the place in BZA stuff, and that may be about what we usually get, but I would like to.
That's not an uncommon measurement for nonconforming use change. It's usually, sometimes the BZA can hear cases where a nonconforming use is changing to another nonconforming use, and the BZA can approve that, but it can't be that the new nonconforming use is, has any greater negative impact to the community. So this is, this is a analysis that the BZA does in other nonconforming use properties and uses.
I have a problem with it, because to me, it sounds like you're going to have a hearing where people are going to come because they like the sign or they don't like the sign. Maybe they go to the church that's advertising itself, and they're all for it, but they, they don't like a certain business attack. To me, it smacks of simply having a popularity contest about a business's right to do business with, with no firm standards, when you're talking about the same use and just different messages and different ways of promoting a message. I don't know, I'm, but I do support the motion to defer so that we can think a little bit more about whether we'd be doing something.
Judy, let me ask one question for them. What's the, when this turns, how often, is this every 30 seconds or every minute or?
It's the, the zoning code only allows eight, every eight seconds, so you can't do it more often than once every eight seconds.
So they're, and they could change the sign, say a stationary sign, one-face sign could stay there for a week and be changed every week or every day or every 30 days?
You could change it every hour if you wanted, you just have to go get your permit.
So a permanent sign, you could change every eight seconds if you could do it that fast, and here you're doing mechanically, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Judy?
The only question I had, and thank you, was about the mechanics. So we're assuming that all of the tri-fold billboards turn this way. What about the new technology that's coming down the pike where they're going to change, like a Rubik's Cube?
The, the.
And those have changed from the top down.
The, our code requires the change to be instantaneous, and the only place you would be able to do that type of sign is a zoning district called Commercial Amusement, and the only place that is, is in Opeland. So you could do, you were talking, the last time we talked about this way back in November, those scrolling signs, they'd only be allowed in the CA district, and any sign that took time to change would only be allowed in the CA district, and that's only, that property only can be found in the Opeland area. That's zoning district.
And I understand the sign you're talking about, but also back to this tri-fold sign that's going this way with each one of those panels, so, but instead of going this way, the panels?
Change.
So they, this wouldn't be allowed?
If they change instantaneously, all the same time, then, and I think that that would be permitted under a code, and they'd have to be static for eight seconds, and they could all change together at eight sec, after eight seconds, that might be a sign that's permitted. I would have to see it because I'm not quite sure what you're, what you're referring to.
It may not be invented yet.
Oh, okay.
I'm going to copyright that one.
Okay.
But it has to meet those requirements to be a permitted sign outside of the CA zoning district.
I've got a motion, second, to defer one meeting to give the, our legal counsel time to determine if the judgment or the Johnson City that pertains to this is, all in favor of the motion, aye? of the motion. Any opposed? Motion is deferred, one meeting. We're now ready for item number four, which is rezoning on Osceola.
I think it was Bob. I think Bob had forwarded it earlier today. We'll make sure you have it.
We'll get our attorney to get it to you.
Item four is a request to rezon properties located on Osceola Avenue. Properties are outlined in red. This is in West Nashville. White Bridge Road is just to the east along here. This is near Sprints, which is just to the north, and the animal, Nashville Animal Association or Humane Association, just to the north as well in Osceola. The request consists of four properties, which is a little under an acre. It's a request to rezon from residential to commercial. Staff is recommending disapproval. The current zoning is R6, which permits single-to-family residential. The proposed zoning is commercial services, which permits a variety of commercial uses, including retail, restaurants, banks, office-like manufacturing, as well as mini-storage. This is in the West Nashville Community Plan. The policy was recently updated and approved by the commission. The policy is suburban neighborhood-evolving. The policy recognizes and supports the evolving residential character of the area and supports residential development. The proposed Commercial Services District is not consistent with the policy, so staff is recommending disapproval. The next two slides identifies the dividing line between the residential areas, area which is south and west of the red line, and the surrounding non-residential area north and east of the red line. There are non-residential districts and uses along Osceola north of the line, however, the character of the area noticeably changes to residential south of the line. Here's another shot. Not only is there a noticeable change in character, but an alley outlined in yellow provides a physical separation from the subject properties and the adjacent residential area. The next several slides contains images which demonstrate the residential character of the area and the residential policy. This is looking at the property. This is outlined in red. Another view. This is another view, and the area right across the street, outlined in yellow. These are those homes directly across. This shows Osceola looking north down Osceola, south of the site. You see where the man is on the map below that indicates where this is taken from. And this is looking south down Osceola and north of the site. As you can see, the character of the area supports the residential policy. I drove through that, through there when I first came. We got this, and I haven't, I wasn't familiar with this area, but I was pleasantly surprised to find that it's actually a quaint little neighborhood, that there's new houses, there's old houses, and there's been a lot of investment made in a lot of the homes. Permitting commercial zoning to turn the corner here could negatively impact the neighborhood, starting a process of incremental erosion of the area's residential character. Currently, there is a noticeable dividing line between the two areas, and once that line is crossed, then it will be difficult to redraw. So staff is recommending disapproval, as the request is not consistent with the policy, and the district could negatively impact the existing residential neighborhood.
The item is open for public hearing. The applicant will be allowed 10 minutes, and you can reserve two minutes for rebuttal if you would like.
Mr. Chairman, I will take advantage of the rebuttal opportunity. My name's Sean Henry. I represent the property owners. My address is 315 Dedrick Street. Appreciate you, Mr. Swiger, leaving the aerial photo up. If I could just draw your attention to the commercial block that we're talking about. Just north of the slide is Lennox Avenue. This commercial block, which I'll refer to as the Sprints Furniture Block, is bounded on the north by Lennox Avenue. To the right is White Bridge Road. To the left is Osceola, and on the south side is Burgess. That whole Sprints Furniture Commercial Block area is about 10 acres, and the subject property that we're talking about is roughly an acre, so roughly 10% of that entire Sprints block. The frontage of that block is about 3,000 feet, 3,000 lineal feet of frontage for that entire Sprints block. And so 85% of that existing block face is commercially zoned. And so we believe, my clients believe, that the difficulty in this property being part of the emerging neighborhood to the west and to the southwest is the fact that you've got these two alleys on the north side of the property and east side of the property that are used for commercial purposes. These alleys are serving commercial vehicles, commercial trucks for refuge and supply to the furniture business and the other businesses in that area. Directly to the east of the subject property on the corner of White Bridge Road and Burgess is a gas station, and I believe that gas station is open 24 hours. So the policy for the emerging neighborhood, we certainly aren't diminishing that in any way. In fact, there's been new development, new investment in the immediate area. But this particular property has been vacant at least since 2006. I think that's when the last home was removed from one of the four parcels here. So it's in a no-man's-land, and we frankly don't believe that it will ever develop for residential purposes. So we believe the commercial zoning would be the appropriate way to allow this property to develop, again, with its proximity and location and orientation with the properties that adjoin it on the north side and the east side. So with that, I'll conclude my comments. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Carl Dreyfus. I am a broker with Car Commercial, which is located in that area at Osceola and Charlotte. I have been involved with this property since 2006, representing the owners. In light of their request to change the zoning from a residential to commercial, one of the things that I did recently was canvas the neighborhood on a door-to-door basis to assess what the neighbors felt. After all, my office, and I've worked in that area for 10 years now, everybody wants to be a good neighbor. I think that you've received in your packet a series of nine letters from property owners in that area. I have prepared, if you would like, I have a map of those to give you more of a visual presentation.
Did you have it staffed? Yes. Place those out.
As you can tell from the letters that you've received, the response actually has been rather good to supporting a change in that zoning, because, as it's been said, it has been vacant since 2006. Most people would like to see a change. We have had zero interest in doing anything residential, despite our best efforts, for the reasons that have already been presented. So I'm strictly here informationally to share with you the letters and those few comments. Thank you very much for your time.
Anyone else wish to speak in support?
I own the property across Burgess Avenue from the subject property. And what pictures of the neighborhood can't show is the amount of traffic that cuts through to avoid the light at White Bridge Road that doesn't feel like a quaint residential area because of all the traffic that comes right through there. The new houses that have gone up are not around this intersection. They're back over in the neighborhood where there's not so much traffic. And that's it.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in support?
Not in support.
Anyone else in support? Seeing none, anyone in opposition?
I'm not turning it commercial, right? And I'm new at this, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Just give us your name, your address, and two minutes.
Beth Gaddis, 119 Osceola Avenue. And from my property, I can see that property. And like she said, the traffic that is already there is unreal. I mean, we're almost getting hit regardless when we come, people passing through, even the city buses come through, which is, you know, what it is, but we don't have sidewalks. The street, Burgess, and even Osceola, Burgess is not even wide enough to fit two cars on at one time. You have to literally stop to let one go around while the other one does. It's already a horrific intersection, and I don't think turning it commercial would be the best for our neighborhood. There's residential around already, and it doesn't seem, to me, it would be better to be left as a plain lot than to put something as a business in or, and once it goes commercial, there's no telling what can go in there, and we have no say right after. I mean, we have the animal shelter down there, and I have two animals that made their way down the street and that we've rescued. But we have lots of virile cats over there, we have lots of things, and I'm just worried what will go in there that will impact our neighborhood. So that's all I have to say. And my daughter, you know, we can't get out and walk much, we don't have sidewalks, and it's already dangerous, and I just think putting more traffic in there would not be a positive. That's all.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else speaking in opposition?
My name's David Cotton. My wife Holly and I and our two small children live at 209 Osceola. I don't know if you have the same map they sent us. That would be the plot that's numbered 007. On the graph that was just up on that outlined, the red, the residential, we'd be right in the corner. We're essentially right across from Xander's Insurance. We've been there since, I believe, 1997. We live in a mixed neighborhood. I don't want you to think I'm a knee-jerk kind of person. I believe in property rights. I understand it's been vacant. I'm not against completely development. I might be different if this had been a smaller commercial. My main concern is this seems to be a really large leap from residential to full commercial services. I'm no expert on zoning, I'll first say that, but it does seem that that's going to open the door for a lot of things that are not going to match. You had, apparently, when my neighbors come in, just mentioned the animal shelter. We were there before the shelter, the shelter came in. It has come with some nuisances. There's a little bit of extra noise, the animal thing. Traffic is the big one. That cannot be stressed enough. You have a very small street with no sidewalks with a heavy amount of pedestrian traffic. Traffic went up enormously when the shelter came in. However, I will say, in the characteristics of the businesses right around me, first one say, the parking lot of Xander's is not the most beautiful neighborhood view for our family, but in light of good neighbors, you've got businesses, Xander's and the shelter. They provide services to the community, they run normal business operating hours, and their clientele is not something I worry about, other than the traffic. What I'm afraid of is if this goes all the way to commercial service, that throws the doors open to a number of things. Is that my time up?
Thank you.
Do you give me a little more time, or, I mean, I could wrap it up, or is that it?
Two minutes.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, could I ask just for 30 more seconds?
Yes, sir.
All right. I do want to address this, because I do think this, the photos and everything can be misleading. The Metro, the school bus, picks up children right there at the corner of that alley that someone has already pointed out. As far as the letters that came, you know, those letters, I don't believe were written by residents. I think we are maybe the only homeowner residents around there. It's a heavily immigrant population. I'm not sure about citizens that, I'm, just say, they have concerns, many of them have children. I'm not sure it would have been real easy for them to not sign it. I would think that in consideration of this big leap, office residential, you know...
Thank you. Anyone else in opposition?
Hello, my name is Kyle Miller. I live at 125 DeMoss Avenue, which is just south of the map it's shown. However, the Burgess-Osceola intersection is the only way into the neighborhood, and I support the planning commission's desire to retain this property as an R6 and not CS. And it, and supporting everybody else that says, "Burgess District cannot handle the traffic as it is for a residential neighborhood." There would have to be significant changes if it were to be commercial. But I support the planning commission's desire to keep this neighborhood. And I spoke with several homeowners that live in the neighborhood today and who were unable to attend because they're working, who agree that they'd like to see it remain residential. And that's it.
Thank you. Anyone else in opposition? Seeing none, the applicant have two minutes for rebuttal.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just be very brief. We just, my client just does not believe, as the property owners, that it's practical to develop this property as residential. We certainly think the Commercial Services District is going to provide a consistent development opportunity, as the adjacent neighbors presently enjoy the CS zoning and the commercial PUD overlay for that property. With that, we appreciate your courtesies. Thank you.
Thank you. So motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion second, close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Derek?
As I have reviewed the staff report, I'm glad that they provided an aerial, thank you, an aerial photo for me, because that gives me a better idea of some of the issues and concerns that were broached during the, during the time that the individuals living in this area spoke on it. And looking at it, and looking at the community character, looking at the traffic issues that do indeed cause me some concerns, and the lack of sidewalks, and also the fact that, you know, although there is commercial in the area, I do believe that if we were to change the zoning on this, that it would indeed appear as if it's encroaching on the surrounding neighborhood, in my opinion. Consequently, I am going to vote for staff's recommendations on this particular piece of property. And again, when I look at the, just the safety issues of the roadways, lack of sidewalks and things of that nature, that does indeed cause me some major concern overall. So I will be voting for staff's recommendation.
Greg?
Well, I see both sides of the issue. While I, I see that it is a 80% commercial, I also understand that, you know, or I think, is it 80% commercial? Is that what testimony had said? Or a majority commercial? But then I also understand the neighbors' concerns too. And I think, for me, CS seems, just a zoning plan without something actually going in seems to kind of frighten the neighbors, and I understand that. There might be a better transitional zoning there, or a PUD, or something that they can communicate with the neighbors, maybe. So I think I'm kind of in the middle, if that makes sense, because I think that the prop, I always like to, my personal philosophy, I guess, is that I hate to see the land not being used. I hate to see it not on the tax rolls, and I hate to see a vacant piece of property, because vacant piece of property can lead to all sorts of problems and issues. So I don't know if the neighbors and the client can get together, but I'm going to have to vote against the zoning request as given.
Stuart?
I agree with my colleagues. I think they're exactly right about several of these points. Also, I certainly sympathize with any property owner who's not been able to do something with the property. I think that may be more a function of the last few years. I'm not sure what CS would have been like the last few years. I think there's a lot of room for residential development in mixed areas like this that are close to bus lines. I live in a very high-density area that's mixed use. It's, it goes and comes with the economy, but I... It's, it goes and comes with the economy, but I agree that CS is probably just too stark at commercial use, and I think it's only a matter of time before this, this area does develop residentially. It's sad for property owners who are paying taxes but don't, don't have a return on their investment, but that's really not a planning issue for us at this point. So I'll be supporting the staff recommendation.
Judy.
I too think that the CS zoning would negatively impact the community. I'm sorry, I'm one of those that cuts through there. And there's not, it's not a lot of room, and I've run into that school bus, well, I didn't run into it, but I was there with the school bus. And, you know, just trying to see more delivery trucks and, and that kind of thing on this street, I think would just be a negative impact. Let me ask you something, however, I'm just a little bit confused. On the lots numbered 026, 027, those coming down to the north?
North or south of the property?
Right, right, right behind the property. Right there.
On White Bridge.
Yeah. So is that, that's all, is that the gas station, all that?
Correct, that's, that's commercial. This, this spot right here?
Yeah, all of that.
On the corner, that's commercial.
That is a gas station.
Yeah, that's the BP.
Yeah, okay, that's why, okay. And then the other CS under the black box there?
Let me go back to a...
Yeah, what?
That's the human.
Oh, that's the human, okay, yeah.
Yeah, that's CL.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Yeah, I think they probably have enough commercial out here. Thank you, those are my comments.
Phil.
Could you give us three or four examples of what could be?
Give us examples of what could be built in a CS if this were to take place?
Well, the CS, it's a little under an acre, you, it's got a .6 floor area ratio, and it's about a little over 23,000 square feet is what the maximum floor area would be on this property, or these four properties. So, I mean, you're looking at pawn shops, convenient mart, just like the fuel station that's on White Bridge, retail, fast food restaurants. It really runs a long and large, numerous uses, retail.
Okay, thank you. I don't know, this may not be the proper time to even ask this, but would the street conditions have to be changed? In other words, the street widened and sidewalks put in? If this were to become CS, would there be requirements there from Public Works to take care of that?
If it came in for a permit, if it was zoned to commercial and they came in for a permit, it would be looked at by Public Works at that time, and they may, they can require a traffic impact study, which, if they, if that shows that they need to do improvements, then they could require them at that time. But with, at this stage, that hasn't been done, because we don't know what's, you know, what's going to go there.
Well, I think that's my biggest problem, we don't know what's going to go there. And that, that really, really bothers me. I know when I was in, serving in council, if somebody just came and said, let's change the property, I couldn't go that route until I knew something, you know, what was going to be happening. So I'd have to be against this in this case, too.
What is, what kind of businesses own plot 027 and 029? Does anybody know?
Figure out where exactly those are, I think that's from the gas station.
We'll first embrace the medical corners.
You know, that, that forms a little notch in a commercial area. And realistically, I don't, I don't see people wanting to live next door to a gas station. But the CS zoning is a leap. If we were talking about CL, I might be more comfortable with that. Obviously, you can't talk about an SP, because you don't, there's no proposal to go there. But to, to do a full-blown CS zoning on an area where there is no, nothing that's proposed or apparently being looked at, I just, I don't know, I'm, that really makes, I'm uncomfortable with that. I'm not particularly impressed with the, the letters that we have, since none of them are immediately adjacent to where this property are. They're all down the street or away. So none of those folks across the street or around that Burgess-Osceola corner have weighed in on this. So I, I don't know, I'm, I'm really conflicted here.
Make a motion.
Yes, go ahead.
I move that we approve staff's recommendation to disapprove.
Second. Motion second, to go with staff recommendations, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now ready for, Phil, you got something from the Parks Board you'd like to share with us?
The only thing I have would be our next meeting coming up on the 6th of March. It'll be the same day as Election Day. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Just, just one thing on that, because I think it came in on the workshop today, the chairman requested, and we'll make that, just as a member of the Parks Commission, a presentation by the Parks staff on the master plan for Centennial Park. And I just wanted to make sure you were aware of that.
Sometime in the future for a work session or immediately after our meeting. Anything from the council you'd like to share with us?
We did a very short agenda on Tuesday night. The county clerk item took as much time as the resolution readings did. And we did send a letter. I introduced, or was going to introduce, a late filed resolution to go to the state legislature. It failed because of objections, but I did have the resolution in letter format and invited members to sign on with me. And we did send a letter to the Speaker of the House and Speaker of the Senate indicating that the council was not in favor of the three bills that I've made all of you aware of, dealing with property rights and non-conforming, and the limitations that that would place on planning organizations to do their job in planning and zoning matters. So that's, that's really about it.
And the executive committee will be meeting Tuesday morning at 8:30, if anybody would like to attend that, and it's public notice also. Executive Director report.
Just a couple of things. Do you allow sustainability luncheon is scheduled on March 8? I think most of y'all have been notified, I think Kelly's checked with you. But that'll be at 11:30 at the Davidson Room. And again, Shadu Johnson, who's the deputy city manager of Vancouver British Columbia, is going to be here to talk about sustainability and some of the efforts. Jennifer Higgs is serving now on the steering committee for the, there's going to be a new Nashville.gov website, and she's serving on that to help that out. One heads up, and we'll get this out to you in an email. On March 14, there's another APA webcast, it'll be Wednesday, March 18, at 3 o'clock, and the subject of that is going to be urban agriculture and food systems planning, so...
And that's a continuing education, hour and a half, so urge you to attend that.
It's on the March 14, Wednesday, March 14. We'll send out a...
3 o'clock to 4:30.
3 o'clock, right. Oh, have you? Okay, all right, sorry.
It's a real interesting subject, too, that...
Just on ongoing things, the Midtown Plan, we had the workshop today, and that will be presented to you on March 22. The Antioch Plan update is underway. I think Tiffany has been in touch with, if she hasn't been in touch with you, she will, to try to meet with you one-on-one and kind of, as we start that process on that, that update. We do have a new Antioch page, webpage, it goes up to date, if it's up, should be up right now. We do have an Antioch specific email list. So far, we've got over 120 people that have requested, on that list. We do have a short video on the webpage. We did a focus group with high school students at Hickory Hollow on the plan, and so that's up on the webpage. And we're just providing news information on that. We are working on Earth Day planning with a number of other departments in Metro and working that, and continuing to work on the satellite sighting of EOC stations. So I think that's pretty much all that I have.
Question. When you say Antioch, does that include Kane Ridge area?
It's a separate one.
This one, that's in the southeast, Kane Ridge, yes. It basically, it basically is Hickory Hollow north.
They'll both be studied.
Right, they're both being. They're sensitive.
Yes, we're very, yeah. Antioch is in the southeast study area.
Anne Bree's doesn't want to be a part of it.
Antioch's in the southeast study area.
Yeah, they're, Phil, they're both going to be studied, but Antioch's first and then the southeast immediately following that. So any other comments from any of the other commissioners that help us along our endeavors? Good journey.